We're kind of meeting to order please, we're everybody please. Let's stand for the prayer.
Dear Heavenly Father, we call upon you this evening, asking for your guidance in our decision-making. Give us the wisdom to make our judgments based on the best interests of this community and the children we serve. These things we ask in your name.
Ms. Lee Bowman with you ladies in the pledge, please.
Pledge, please. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Detective Rick Hall, please.
Mr. Campbell.
Here.
Mr. Egan. Ms. Jackson is not with us, Ms. Lee Bowman. Ms. Lamoyne.
Here.
Ms. Dyssard is not here, Mr. England.
Here.
Mr. Long.
Here.
Mr. Smith is not with us, Mr. Warner.
Here.
And Ms. White.
Thank you, Ms. Bowman. Right now, I'd like to take a point of privilege to start off the meeting with congratulating four of our board members that had no opposition in November. Ms. Lamoyne, Mr. Warner, Ms. Roslin White, and Ms. Carly Jackson. Congratulations. And for those who have opposition in November, I just want to give you the respect of this board and all decisions that y'all made in the last four years. And because you've made this district one of the best in the state, and I wish y'all luck in November. Thank y'all. Okay, another point of privilege, Ms. Lamoyne.
Thank you, Mr. England. This week, the Louisiana School Boards Association hosted the annual Southern Region Leadership Conference, and we had several hundred school board members from Louisiana, Mississippi, Texas, Arkansas, and Georgia come and visit New Orleans for three days of professional development. And as part of the conference, we are so proud to have the Shamet High Band, Jazz Band, and the ROTC kick off the conference with the second line and the opening ceremony performance. And I just want to give a congratulations and a shout-out and thank all of those students and teachers who took part in really helping to make that such a special part of the conference. And it was a great showcase to have St. Bernard Parish highlighted with that many states and school board members in attendance. So I want to give a special thanks to Mr. Charles Kassar, Cindy England, Lexi Pritchard, Caleb Lambert, Jason Rusk, and Brian Shepherd, who were there working with our students and performing. They did get also a shout-out and some special recognition from the keynote speaker, Mr. Mickey Smith Jr., who's a Grammy Award-winning music educator, and spoke throughout his keynote address about what a wonderful job the Shamet High students did and what a wonderful fine arts program that we have at the high school. So, thanks to Shamet High and to everyone involved. We're so proud.
Thank you, Ms. Lamoyne. I have to contest too that I've been going to different conferences over the past few years, and this conference for the last few days is one of the best that I've ever been to. I mean, they had some keynote speakers that were unbelievable and good. And so, in fact, we're going to have some type of presentations tonight, and they address some of these issues, you know, as far as crisis and suicide, you know? So, it's different things that's happening today, not tomorrow, but today is happening. So, I just wanted to bring that to light. So, okay, we're going to item number two, presentation, updated emergency crisis plan.
Just to give a little framework, about three or four years ago, John Ram, who runs our Office of Emergency Preparedness here in St. Bernard Parish, came to us with a grant proposal to develop emergency and crisis plans for all of our schools here in St. Bernard Parish. And we worked in partnership with the LSU Stevenson Disaster Management Institute to develop those plans, along with our Sheriff's Department, Fire Department, local parish government, first, all the first responders, the medical people as well within the parish. And we developed a very robust plan at each of our school sites, and we have been operating under those plans for three or four years. At the beginning of this school year, as we do each year, we always look and to revise, see what we can do a little bit better. And as we looked at it, we decided to repartner with the same group of people and update those plans in lieu of many things that have been happening within our country and across the world, to make sure that we have state-of-the-art emergency and crisis plans. So again, we called on the LSU Stevenson Disaster Management Institute and all of our local partners to say, let's take a look at what we have, let's take a fresh look at all of our facilities, and see what we can do to update that as well. So tonight with us, I mean, I'm very happy to say that we have spent the last several months where these officials have gone through, again, every one of our schools, looked at the floor plans, looked at all of our reunification plans, looked at all the plans for every type of potential issue that we could have, and put those again in writing with some specialized materials for our teachers, for our parents, and for all of our students and their families, so that we all know what our roles will be in case anything would happen within St. Bernard. And we're very blessed in this community to have such a close relationship with our Sheriff's Department, with our Fire Department, with our parish government. And any time that we need anything at any one of our schools, the response time is phenomenal. I mean, they're there within, I want to say seconds, it seems like, but a few minutes and they're there, they're taking over, they're helping us, and they're there to protect our children and our employees. So tonight with us, to give a report to our community, are the people who have made this happen within our community. And I think that it's now, and I'm going to let Brant Mitchell maybe talk a little bit more about this, but it's going to turn into a model for the state of Louisiana. So with us tonight, we have our parish president, Guy McGinnis, we have our OEP director, John Ram, and we have our Sheriff Pullman could not be with us, he had another engagement, but we have Chief Baumee, and I saw John Doran, and Bobby Norton from the Sheriff's Department, and our newly-appointed Fire Chief, Mr. Earl Borden, and our former interim chief, Charlie Luchardi, and his staff as well, the Training Director for the Fire Department with us as well. And we have signed those particular plans, and we're going to be putting them in place and again, going through more training with our staff. But the important person here tonight, who's going to give us an overview of what this looks like and what is involved in it, is Mr. Brant Mitchell, who is, Brant, if you would just come up to the podium. He, you know, I may let him tell us a little bit about himself, or I may try to star something. He's a former military man, he was an officer in the infantry, served overseas. And when he came back, he was supporting emergency management throughout our state and our country. He was the hurricane program manager for the state of Louisiana, transitioned to Homeland Security after 9/11, and was the Deputy Director for GOSEP within our state. And now he runs these, he's the Executive Director at the LSU Center. And he was the one, he and his staff, who spearheaded this whole effort for us, brought all of our agencies together, and developed a plan that we think is the best of any school system in this state. So, Brant Mitchell, please take it away.
Thank you so much for that introduction. So, we've got a presentation for y'all tonight, and really what we want to do is just going to give you a high-level overview of the, what the planning process, some of the deliverables that we're providing to the parish, and really what is in the plans. So, just real quick on the agenda, we're going to talk about the planning process, just how we actually worked with the different schools and their staff, and how we came up with the plans. We'll go into what we are actually providing to the parish at this particular time, starting today. Then we'll give, real quickly, just into a plan overview. And we'll then go into the annexes that describe the big threat hazards and the, some of the functional areas that we have built into the plan. And then we're going to go into the Parent Emergency Guide, which is really something new, and we're really excited about. What I'm going to close with is, we actually built a mobile app for St. Bernard that is really designed for the administrators, for the teachers, and more importantly, for the first responders, so they have access to this information at any time. And I'm going to give you a quick demo, this is going to be ready to be deployed in about two to three weeks. And it's just an additional thing that wasn't part of our contract, but we thought this would be a great add-on, so that's, that will be available to St. Bernard as well. So just the actual deliverables, and this is just language right from the contract. Of course, we started off by just doing a quick review of all the current plans. A lot of these plans were able to pre-populate, about sixty, seventy percent, just based on the information that was already in the plan. Of course, we updated all of that, made it more relevant and added more consistency to what we're doing today with Emergency Management Incident Command. Also, we met with the different schools, presented a plan outline, we had a kickoff meeting where we asked for feedback and comment, and also some of the content that we needed in order to complete the plan, so it was specific to each school. In addition to that, we did, once we did all the data collection, we really went and drafted the plans over, you know, about a six-month period. And then finally, we met with each school, we met with their staff members, we provided an overview of the plan, and that was done about two weeks ago, where we spent the day with them, going over at a high level what was in the plan. We also had an opportunity to identify things that were still missing, so we can complete the plan for today. So the plot, the process itself is, it's really a collaborative process. We have really just great participation all the way through from every school. They were exciting, they were engaged, and they were really responsive to ensuring that we had what we need in order for us to meet the plan. So, you know, this is not our plan, this is really a collaborative plan that we worked with, and like I said, great participation from all the schools, as well as really the district. The district was phenomenal. First thing we want to do is just understand the situation, so through that, we identify threats and hazards, and I'll give you a high-level overview of that. We want to make sure that the plans address the risk, and you'll see, once we do a risk profile, each school's a little bit different based on what they view the risks are. Some of that is just based on geography. Those schools that are closer to the river are concerned about a barge release, for example. So, and, or for a major throughway, they might be concerned about a chemical or hazmat release. So we're able to address those issues based on feedback from the school. Then we determine goals and objectives, and those are pretty consistent through all the parishes. And then we actually go into the, develop the courses of action on how they actually respond. And this, by doing this, we have functional annexes, which I'll give you a real high-level overview, as well as more specific threat annexes, and I'll explain that to you in just a minute. And then the last part is the plan implementation and maintenance. So this is kind of where we transition. We are, we provided the plan, we provided the initial overview, we actually provided training documents too, so that the schools have an opportunity to go with detail with each of the participants that are having responsibility in the plan. And now the next phase is to kind of train on it and exercise the plan. And we've already had some really good conversations with St. Bernard, the school district, on some of the things that they want to do from an exercise standpoint, and they're, like, they're being really proactive about it, so it's really great to see. Now, this is the actual, just a visual of what I kind of already briefed, but, you know, as I said, we had our initial district meeting, and there we had an opportunity to present the process to the schools. We also, before that, we reviewed the current crises plan, so we can integrate that into an outline. Then we actually sat down and met with the school plan again. Usually these were by Zoom phone calls or whatever, just so we can kind of get those details and also make sure what we were presenting was consistent with what the schools were looking for. We also did site visits, we went to every school, and we had a really good opportunity to visit the school, visit the faculty, or some of the faculty, some of the staff members. And then finally, we took all that information to build that plan and write those plans out. So this is just an overview of all the plans, these are the covers that were just signed. So we delivered twelve plans for all the schools, for the public schools, and a thirteenth plan for the school district. Now, the actual deliverables for each school and as well as the district, they've got their own emergency operation plan. And if you saw the signing, these are pretty significant plans, these are about a hundred and fifty, in some cases more pages, so they've got a lot of good content, a lot of information. Now, we can't expect our teachers to understand and know everything in that plan, their schedules are already booked, so we don't want to burden them with too much more additional responsibilities because we know they're already piled on. So we also built a teacher guide, and this is designed, it's intentionally read, it's meant to be kept on their desk, so they can easily identify it. There's checklist, if there's a bomb scare, if there's an active shooter, if there's a lost child, all that's detailed on what their responsibilities are in a quick go-to guide that they can really just grab and pull up and review as they need it during the actual event. So that's, that's by design. Again, we don't want them trying to MRAs a hundred and fifty pages, we want them to know what's relevant for them and their students. In addition to that, and this was actually a, suggested by St. Bernard, particularly Alex, and she suggested, why can't we build a parent guide? And we've been working with the state, and I'll share with you that throughout this process, we engaged the state. The plan that we used was their initial blueprint that they provide as a template. We actually redid the template because we found best practices at other places that we integrated into it, and our anticipation is that this will be the state's model plan moving forward. Because, so this is the first time anyone's really taken a deep dive into the plan itself and to the template itself and actually made changes. And I'll, I'll kind of elaborate on one of those here in just a minute. And, but also with the state, they don't have the parent guide, we haven't seen it before, so we thought this was a great addition, and I'll go over a little bit what's in here as well. And then finally, we provided a checklist. These plans are only good for a year, the student, that's because our students change, our faculty change, and all that information has to be required and updated into the plan. School rooms change, anything that changes throughout the year, we want to capture that at the beginning of the year, so it'll be current moving forward. So that's a process, and what we wanted to do is make that as painless as possible. So we provided that checklist and exactly how to update, what page, what table, and so forth, so the plan would always be consistent. This is the outline of the plan, and like I mentioned, these are about a hundred and fifty pages, once you take everything into consideration. Not going over all this, but you know, we do want to capture the planning process, there's a little bit about the summary of how we went through this process, that's part of the plan. There's the basic plan, which really just identifies the overall role and responsibility. Following that, the basic plan also has the concept of operations and how the school structures and organizes itself. Then we go into these functional annexes. And the way I always like to kind of explain the functional annex, it's a major muscle movement. So this is something that requires coordination and planning. This is evacuation of the school. It's family reunification, lockdown. So these are things that are part of many different annexes. So if there's an active shooter, you're going to have lockdown, you're going to have reunification. So we go in detail into the functional annex, how each one works, so once we get to the actual threat hazard, it can be very concise without having to go into those details. In addition to that, we sit down with each school, we went through all the different hazards, and again, as I said, they selected all the hazards that they wanted to be part of the assessment. This is just an example of the introductory, and it has all the points of contact. In addition, it has a signature page, and that's really important because what the signature page reflects is this community approach, something that's been really big with FEMA for the last ten years, is this whole community approach, and that's everybody collaborating, working together, and you saw that here in St. Bernard. As mentioned, we first came out here in 2018, and when we did, we actually created these tactical maps. So we didn't write the emergency operation plan, but we brought all of our first responders to the room, gave them some planning principles and some guidance, and then they came up with the plan. So we had the opportunity to do that, and that were, again, just like this time, we had great participation, it was led by the sheriff's office, and they did a phenomenal job of kind of organizing that data and putting all these maps together. New schools got about sixteen to eighteen different maps that show everything from fire poles, utility connections, as well as where key command positions are going to go, routes for the schools, entry points into the schools, all that's there so they can have a coordinated response. This is a typical ICS org chart, this is the one from Muro. And ICS is important, they, these were in the old plans, but it wasn't called ICS, so that's Incident Command System. After Katrina, the Department of Homeland Security required all governments to adopt NIMS, the National Incident Management System. And a big piece of that is the Incident Command. And the whole part of that is keep everyone on common language. So you have an incident commander, you have, you have these different functional areas like operations, logistics, and administration. So we kind of took that model and put it back into the school plan, so they were functioning on something that our first responder community is familiar with. Now, the ICS for the school is going to be different from when the first responders come in. They might implement ICS to control the whole thing if it's like a lost child. But if it's an active shooter, first responders are going to come, they're going to take over Incident Command, and there'll be a school liaison. So now they've got all that identified, so they can plug right into the first responder Incident Command to help facilitate that response. Also, we looked at threats and hazards, and when we look at threats, we wanted the probability and then the consequences, and I believe we have a chart on the next slide. So this is a very well-accepted chart in emergency management circles. And as you can see, we look at the probability, and something that could be rare, which is, we don't have anything that's in here is rare. So it's either unlikely, possible, likely, or almost certain. And we do have some things that are almost certain, such as severe weather. And then we also looked at consequences, and consequences are valued on damages and then potential injuries and up to death. And I will tell you, anything that rated as possible, which is a one percent chance in any given year, that involved catastrophic, which would be any death, then that was considered a critical hazard from a threat perspective. So this is a GOCHA, and you can see all the different threats that they identified, and you can see where the risk rating fell for each one. Now, in addition to that, one thing, it's, it's a little difficult to read, but you can see, some of these threats have district next to them. That's because the district either controls that piece, or they have a lead role in facilitating the response. One of those is bus transportation, the transportation, that is something that the district owns. So that is a responsibility at the district level, and then the school plan just is tied into what the district response is. And that way, the military, we call this nesting, they're supporting each other. This is the entire profile for all twelve schools plus the district. You can see some of those non-applicable, and again, most of that's based on geography, just depending on how close they are to the main highways through here or through the river. We had some that selected infrastructure failure, which could be water or power. Not everyone thought that was necessarily a risk because they had processes in place that they didn't even want to put a plan in for it. But you can kind of see, now also, you'll kind of notice where it goes from, on some of them, moderate to high. It goes from moderate to high for school violence. And so as your students get older, the potential for more greater risk is greater because the students are older. So we recognize that, and those risk profile changes for middle school and high school, where it's almost, you know, minor or moderate for elementary, it does increase for those higher schools. So, this is not meant for y'all to read, I just wanted to kind of elaborate on something to kind of show y'all some of the things that we did. So in the state's master plan, they just have lockdown, and they have a procedure in place to go for lockdown. Well, what we recognize is, you don't always need a complete lockdown like you would for active shooter. So we actually integrated three different levels, yellow, orange, and red. Yellow would be for something that may be going on in the neighborhood, and we don't want anyone entering or leaving the school. So the school's in a lockdown, but it's not like barricading the doors. Then we have an orange, where orange would be a little bit more severe, and the reason we have orange, if, say if first responders were responding to a medical incident, we don't want school, our students roaming around the halls, our teachers, we want our first responders to be able to come in and get directly to that individual student. And so we want to make sure there's no distractions or anything that might prohibit that. And then red would be something for like an active shooter, where it's not only just lockdown with barricading and everything else you could do to ensure the greatest chances for success. The, can you go back this slide? Yeah. Now also, one of the things that we have in there, you can't really, again, you can't read it, but that gray block on that second page, that is a script. So every threat that we have, where that might involve notifying the student body through the intercom, we wanted to make sure that the person who has to do that function had a script ready for any type of event. We don't want them thinking, we don't want them to have to, you know, to what should I say? It's all written there for them to have an easy script in place to be able to do that. And then finally, on the right is the active shooter annex. And again, you can't really see it, but what I wanted to point out was in that bold, in those boldened bullet lists, those are the pieces of the functional annexes that are part of active shooter. So you can kind of see how the threat hazard builds off of these functional annexes. And then the last part of this, what you also see there is the responsibility of the bullet list, it's almost like a checklist for every person and what their role is for that particular event. So again, it's all right there, and for the teachers, it's all right here for them to the quick access. Next. So, don't want to talk a whole lot about actual specifics, but this is just to kind of point out, there are some things that are completely led by the districts, and one of those is continuity of operations. It's the district's responsibility to ensure that the school's going to have a ability to perform essential functions. And so that is designed and put in place for, at the district level. Again, you know, they have all the four phases in there, and then we have who the essential personnel, the essential functions, all that is captured as part of the district's plan. And then the last part I'll say about that, oh, again, this is, it just kind of reinforces how every person has a role, and then that role is all bulleted out so they know exactly what they have to do. So they don't have to know the whole plan, they only have to know what their role is during the plan. Next slide. And then the last piece, and this is kind of somewhat unique here, but I, you know, I was telling the district today, I love their reunification plan, because they have their reunification, reunification site's a civic center, it's away from the school. Now with that, while it looks great on paper, it needs to be tested because we know our parents are going to go to the school. But ultimately, it's much easier to manage, to get the students away from the school, that's a threat. We don't want our parents going to a threat environment, so we had that whole piece completely removed from the school, as well as it's co-located with the Joint Information Center for the media. But that is a great practice, but you know, we recognize that it might be hard to implement. And so we actually have option A and option B for reunification. Option A is, there's no threat of violence or injury, it's just if, you know, a chemical spill, shelter in place, now it's time to reunify. Option B is knowing that it could be a more dramatic experience because something may have happened at the school itself. Next slide. And this is just, you can kind of see, this is actually fully led by the district. We have one position in here that would be a liaison for the school involved, but really, this is a district-run operation, and this is just the way we structured that particular response. Next slide. And as I mentioned, we did build a parent guide based on the recommendation from St. Bernard. And this has, number first, it's got a letter from the superintendent, so just explaining their, her philosophy on emergency procedures. It's got contact lists, it's got things that they need to know about reunification, it's got what emergency measures are in place, so it's really just a quick guide for all the parents, and this is going to be handed out at the beginning of the school year. So this is the last thing I wanted to show y'all, this is the app, and I've got a little video that's going to show up on the next slide. But what you'll see here, there's, we tried to organize this so as a first responder, they could click on whether or not they need campus maps, whether they need the tactical maps, which have all of their control graphics on, contact list, all that's kind of integrated. So those sixteen maps, we just basically built a repository, so it was quickly accessible. Now what's great about this is, once you download the app, you're actually, it's all cached into the app, so if you have no connectivity, it doesn't matter, because it's built into the app, and as we need to, we'll do a push, and when if we have to make an update, we'll just make it automatic, you have to update it before you get access to it. And that's just one of the maps that you can see on there as well, go to the next video. So this is going to be a video, this is actually an emulator that's on our computers, and what you're seeing here is they're typing in, they're requesting an account. They have three different roles, it could be a first responder, a teacher, and admin. They can select what school they're associated with, including district wide if it's first responder. As you're typing in a password, it requires some complexity because we want it to be secure, and as you're typing that in, it's got these little green indicator lights that said, okay, you got to lower. said, okay, you got a lowercase letter. So it tells you what you're missing if you're not, to help people kind of build that password. Now, this particular account's going to log into an administrator account, so they're going to have access to multiple schools. And right now, this is just showing that that pops up if you put something wrong in. And as this gets entered, you're going to see three different schools pop up, or I guess, this is, again, GOCHA, there it goes. So all that, for that particular, where we finished loading this up for the demo, those three schools are already into the system. And as you can see, there, it's got a quick access to the plan, you can zoom in, if you do an orientation, the app is responsive, meaning it automatically resizes based on the orientation, as well as the type of device it's being used. So if you're using an iPad, it's going to take up all the real estate of an iPad. So that's available, and that's built into it as well. Again, all this is available too, and it's really designed to be really quickly accessed in case there's an event. That's just the orientation, and we've got contact lists, so these are specific to each of the schools. The one thing we're still adding to it is, when you click, if you press on a person, it'll actually make the phone call from your phone, so it's not just having access to the number, but it's actually being able to use to actually notify that person. And like I said, so it's just going to kind of go show you a few more features, but the big thing is, this is almost ready, and it's just being part, being given to the parish, because we felt like this would be a good resource. And instead of them having to rely strictly on PDF files, they would have something that was mobile, that they could take with them. And that, the account access is controlled by the school, the district, so anyone submits an account, it comes to the school district, they approve or deny access based on whether or not they know the individual, or make a follow-up and validate that they actually have a need for. Any questions?
Yes. Mr. Smith?
Ms. Mitchell, fantastic presentation, really appreciate that. Safety is the main thing for our students and our staff, that's the main thing. At that conference today, I hate to keep on bringing that up, but they talked about safe zones, pressure points, because what happened in Texas and that...
Sorry. What happened in Texas and that, most of these people, they passed away, those children passed away because they bled out, okay? And if they, what we, what's got to be taught, I think that might be probably in your program, you know, these pressure points, okay, in a safe place, you know, they just don't run back and back to the classroom, they go behind a door, you know? So these are the things that, quick things that's got to be taught, and I think you've probably got it all in your charts, right there.
Well, so there's some other things too, and, you know, one of the things we're learning about the Uvalde school shooting, they treated it like a hostage situation, and that really changed, because normally, had they responded, and you know, the doctrine has changed significantly. A decade ago, it was wait for the SWAT team.
Right.
Then it was wait for another officer to show on scene. Now, if you're on scene, you go in.
Yes.
So that is the, how the doctrine has evolved, and what we saw is that did not happen. So, you know, the whole, you know, it's unfortunate, a lot of those students would have survived if they had appropriate care at the right time.
That's correct.
And it just wasn't allowed to happen.
Right. But that's our main concern, and we just want to let the people, the people of St. Bernard know that we're doing everything possible for the students and our, and our staff of St. Bernard Parish. Any questions from board members?
Before we get into questions, I think it would be advantageous, maybe if someone maybe from the sheriff's department can come and talk a little bit about their training on site and their part in it, and our parish president would like to say something about the government involvement, or Mr. Ram, our new fire chief, I think, could each talk a little bit about their parts in it and how they feel about it.
Good afternoon, how y'all doing? My name is Bobby Norton, and I'm a major with the St. Bernard Parish Sheriff's Office. And Sheriff Pullman wanted me to kind of give you an overview of some of the training we do, our policy and procedures, and some of the equipment that we're equipped in our offices with. The first thing is, we have a really detailed policy and procedure on active shooter or armed intruder. It gives you real straight guidelines on what's expected of an individual officer that makes the scene all the way up to the Incident Commander, so there's nothing left out. Everyone knows exactly what they're supposed to do. Every one of our officers have the policy, we train on that policy. So the first thing we want to make sure is that they understand what it is they need to do. And with active shooter and armed intruder, it is immediate entry. We're not waiting, just like the gentleman talked about with SWAT, I've been involved in SWAT for almost 30 years, and that was the doctrine, wait, wait, wait. And after Columbine, they realized that you can no longer wait for SWAT to get there. Once SWAT gets there, it's over. So our doctrine is make immediate entry, press into the school, go straight to the shooter. Our training, so, we do two types of different training on armed intruder, active shooter. What I find really important is during the summer, we actually train in our schools. This year, we trained in Shawmut High School, the Ninth Grade Academy, and Joe Davies. We rotate these schools every two years. So it's not just going into a classroom and training in an unfamiliar place. Our officers are training in schools in this parish, so if they do have a call, they know exactly what the school looks like, and hopefully exactly where to go. This summer, we trained 186 of our employees, we still had two training days left this summer. Something we did this summer too is, we brought the fire department with us, they were a great partner, because we know that the fire department is going to have to go in some point and provide assistance. The second part of our training is, we do active shooter, armed intruder, again, in our 40-hour in-service. In our 40-hour in-service, the officers are taught many different things, but we include active shooter in there. So at the very least, they're getting at least 16 hours of training every year. And we also offer more training than that, but at least every officer will get 16 hours. The LSU mapping program, I was part of that planning process, I think it was three or four years ago, it's a phenomenal tool, it really helps out the responding officers. The Incident Commander really doesn't have to think too hard about where do we set up our command structure, where, how do we reroute traffic, it's really all there. How do we handle incoming resources? What is our reunification? Those are things that you really don't have to think about anymore, because it's right there for you. Now, the environment can change, and we may have to alter our plan, but it's already there for you. The initial officer arriving on scene will have the same plan that the Incident Commander has. Every one of our officers has these plans. Equipment, so Sheriff Pullman has made a big effort to equip our officers, and not just SWAT officers, line officers, between the body armor, the entry shields, long rifles, helmets, those are things that are important, breaching equipment. Sometimes in an active shooter, the initial officers who are arriving on the scene may not have breaching equipment, and you may have to breach a door, depending on which way it opens, in or out. Our officers now have the ability and have breaching kits on every platoon, they have entry shields on every platoon, and we have purchased and issued out 94 rifles. So equipment should not be a problem, even early on, it should not be a problem. Every school has, at least, has one of our radios, so the principal has the ability to get on our channel and call us and say, hey, this is what's happening at our school. And we're sending some of our officers to the Louisiana School Safe Summit, which is in August, on August 4th in Baton Rouge. So I feel really confident about where we are as a department, I feel really confident where we are as a parish, and I feel good about where we are if we ever have to respond to something to this magnitude. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, we'll see if anybody...
Yeah, any... He comes to define the ball.
Okay. It's Chief Borden.
My name is Earl Borden, I'm the newly appointed fire chief for St. Bernard Parish. I want to talk a little bit about what our role would be in a situation like that. We are an all hazards organization, so we would, we would respond to any incident of such type, to handle fires, explosions, any kind of natural gas release, any situation that would happen in an active shooter-type event. But our main priority would be medical assistance. We're all trained to the EMR level, we've got a great relationship with the sheriff's office. Over the past couple of years, we've been doing active shooter training over the summers in the schools, they've been a great partner, they've been helping us. We're getting exposure to all of our people, that way they know what their role would be in a situation like that. Most recently, one of our chief officers is taking a big role in helping us with active shooter. We've purchased what we're calling active shooter bags, we have three of them, they contain numerous tourniquets and large gauze-type bleeding containment. So our primary role would be to enter with the sheriff's office and any type of, you know, mass casualty incident, to as quickly as possible try to sustain life. So we're going to continue training, and I want to commend the sheriff's office for allowing us to participate with them, and also the school system for allowing, y'all allowing us to use the facility, and also for being proactive in this. This is hopefully something we never have to deal with, but we need to be prepared in case we ever do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lord. Guy passed out.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, it's hard to follow the act of these two gentlemen here. I've known for quite a while. The government's part in this is more of a coordinating effort. Just recently, we had that bomb scare over at Newness Community College, so there's an on-scene commander, Incident Commander, on-scene that controls everything. And we try and stay in contact with them, said you need any resources, that's our job to call in resources. Now, as far as the training goes, I attended one of Bobby Norton's active shooter trainings over at Joe Davies', I would not want to have him for one of my teachers. Oh, boy, he was rough, I'm telling you. But he does it well, he's been doing it for many years, and the cities come down here. I've worked with Bobby quite a bit since he's come on board here. We get along good, we go to train together, and we cooperate, we talk. That's something you have to do before something happens. You have to know who you're working with, and know how they work and how they function in those situations. I know a lot of the guys in the sheriff's department, been working with them for years, they're good people, they want to do what's right down here. Same thing with the fire department. I've known Earl, Chief Luchardi, and Chief Crotwell over here for quite a while, the Training Division, the Special Hazards and Incident Team, I think they call them, right, okay? But they do a lot of training, they respond well, they're a bunch of good people, and I know, we get together as much as we can to, you know, talk about things and go over responsibilities and roles, so when we do get in these situations, we know what's happening, and we don't step on each other's toes. That's the worst thing that can happen, if you get in there and don't know what you're doing. As Bobby alluded to, the maps that we're drawing, they've got ingress and egress, they've got landing zones for medical evac, for VIPs, they've got EMS stages, so the stuff that SDMI did was incredible. They came in and they looked at all the schools, and we were just happy to be part of this. You know, the money became available back in '18, I said we need to use it for this, and I believe we were the first parish in the state to do this. So we wanted to get it on board, and now that they've come back and re-updated the plans, I think it's a good idea, and as Brant said, we need to exercise these plans. Put them to the test, because you don't want it to follow where something happens, you don't know what you're doing. Any questions? Thank you for having us.
Thank you.
I'd like to ask Alex, well, come on, Guy.
Okay. There you go. (laughter) I got the look from Ms. Vochte, so I figured I had to come on and say something. No, first of all, I want to thank everyone for their efforts in putting this plan together, and Ms. Vochte, thank you for taking the lead, this is very important. For our children, you know, everything that we do in this parish, everything that y'all do in the school system, with all of the activities our children have, our children have, and recreation, you know, the percentage that something like that's going to happen in this parish, my belief, is low because of what we do in our community. But there might be that one instance. So I just, I just want to thank y'all. Look, today, we had some emergency things happen, very small, we had a leak into the river today. John was called, we called, we make sure our water intake was taken care of, took care of that. We had a small container sitting in the neighborhood that was filled with some type of diesel or gas, fire department goes out there, does their due diligence, that's just today, right? So these big events, and you see the tornadoes and hurricanes and that type of stuff, we, you know, it's kind of sad, but we're pretty good at that kind of stuff. But, but what we do, I just want to reiterate, what we do every day is to make sure that our children are engaged, and that if we see something, we say something. Sheriff's Department will go out and do a check on any home, and I can tell you, we've done it already. And we make sure that we take care of that citizen, if they need help, whatever it may be. We're not looking to put them in jail, we're looking to help them. So, and all of that is because of the communications we have amongst the agencies in the parish. So thank you guys so much for doing this today, and Ms. Vochte has nothing to be mad at me for, because I did say something. Thank y'all so much.
Thank you, Guy.
Well, when he used to be in school, I used to tell him not to say anything much anymore. That was a long time ago.
You just let him talk now.
Yeah. I'd like to ask Alex Schneider to come up a minute. Alex is really from our school system spearheaded this particular effort this year, and with the help of Jason Dewey, I know who is out here, who's supervisor of our buildings and grounds, and David Fernandez, who's our chief financial officer. So it's been a very cooperative and collegiate effort, and that's just what we expect from St. Bernard Parish. But I'd like to thank Alex, as well as all of the other agencies represented here, and I'd like, Alex, if you could talk a little bit about the training that we have done with our school staffs and will continue to do, and then the simulation we're thinking of for this coming year.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Vochte. So, so far, we have trained both our administrative staff, Lauren and her team were able to come and demonstrate for our administrators, our assistant principals and principals, how to train their own staff. We've put together long-term plans on various drills that principals are going to need to do throughout the year, and how we're going to track those drills, how we're going to make sure that we are able to consistently say that our schools have really been equipped to deal with any sort of crisis that might come their way. One of the recommendations that the Stevenson Institute has made is the various trainings for both our crisis management teams at the school site, as well as here at the district level, and several recommendations to work really hand-in-hand with those who are here today, to do tabletop simulations of reunification in particular, in an active shooter event, and an actual simulation at a school site, making sure that all of the various entities are really ready to go. As Brant mentioned, our reunification plan, which really lies within our domain of control, is something that looks beautiful on paper, and we've put a lot of thought into that. John Ram helped us walk that civic center and think about how we were going to go ahead and reunify students with families, but getting all of the really critical people around the table together to figure out, you know, how does this actually work in application, is going to be super important. So that's really what the superintendent has tasked us with next, is going from the planning phase to the practice phase, and so we'll be working on that as the school year starts.
Fantastic.
Questions?
Any questions? Let me just say this, I really liked the parent emergency guide, that's fantastic, because parents, you know, as soon as they hear something in the northern part of the parish, southern parish is already calling, you know, so this is great, this is fantastic, you know? Like I said before, the main, the main thing is the safety of our children in St. Bernard Parish. So, any questions from board members? Mr. Long?
I have more of a comment than a question. You know, after Uvalde, Texas, I came into this meeting concerned and worried, but after listening to the leaders of our parish, I see that we're in good shape here, and I think we can have confidence, I think the people of St. Bernard can have confidence that if, God forbid, something happens, we'll be ready. And that's a tribute to everyone here. Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Mr. Warner?
Yeah. This is one of the most terrifying things you could ever face. Right? And it's horrible to even think about what could happen, and we hope we never have to use a plan, like our new fire chief said, you know, Earl, we never want to have to implement this, but... never want to have to implement this, but how do you deal with a catastrophe? What do you do in the event of a catastrophe? You have to have a plan. You better have a plan. So just listening to the gentleman from LSU and the plan that they put together, it definitely makes a lot of us feel a lot better to know that we have a plan in place and it's a great plan from what I've just listened to. And I know our fire department, our sheriff's department, our administration is going to be there along with our school administration in the event anything would ever happen. So great plan. Thank y'all very much for everybody's input.
Right. Anyone else? Ms. Vochet?
I just want to thank everyone for being here.
Right, being here tonight.
I know I say this all the time. I've been with the school system a very, very long time. And I think during the Katrina and thereafter, I really got to see what that cooperative effort really, really means. And whenever there's an issue or an incident within our school system, we make one phone call. You know, we call the sheriff's department. They're there like a flash. If we have issues that we need to call upon our firefighters, they're, they're there. Everyone is so agreeable. Everyone is so responsive. You know, our parish government, Guy, has really set the tone in terms of cooperative working as agencies all together. So I just want to thank all of you gentlemen for your efforts in helping us to make it safe for our schoolchildren to be there, that we provide safe and secure environments where our kids can learn and feel good about being there and that our employees can feel safe and comfortable. And if it weren't for you guys who are sitting over there, that wouldn't be, that wouldn't happen. So just want to thank everybody and our new partner, who's been with us a few years, Brand over at LSU. We hopefully will continue to have many conversations, continue to update the plans that we have, call on you for any advice that we might need, and take the next step in actually putting some of this into practice in terms of a simulation so that we would have some practical experience. It wouldn't just be on paper, but it would be something that we could feel good about. And we all know that when you practice something, it comes much more easily to you. So thank all of you and I want to thank Alex especially for putting this effort and bringing all of these people together.
Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to item number three. Approval to incorporate the reported general committee meeting minutes of July 12th to 2022 and to the minutes of July 26th, 2022, regular monthly meeting.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Warner. Second by Ms. White. Any questions? Please cast your vote.
Motion passes eight zero.
Approval of regular monthly meeting minutes of May 24th, 2022 as published on July 1st, 2022. Motion, Ms. Lemoyne, second by Kelly. Any questions? Please cast your vote.
Motion passes eight zero.
Approval to regular monthly meeting minutes of June 28th, 2022 as published July 22nd, 2022. Motion by Mr. Long, second by Ms. White. Any questions? Please cast your vote.
Motion passes eight zero.
Okay. Next item is personnel changes. Ms. Vochet. Oh, Ms. Richard, I'm sorry. Glad to have you here today.
Yes, thank you. I'm very glad to be here. Good evening.
Good evening.
So you should find your personnel changes, the most recent, in your folder. And I just want to point out on the personnel changes, Erin Larson, who was our middle school curriculum coordinator for English and Social Studies, at the last meeting, we had appointed her as the new assistant principal at Andrew Jackson, which opened her position. And we did have interviews for that. And the new middle school English and Social Studies instructional coordinator will be Ms. Rebecca Gio. And Ms. Gio is currently, she's been with our school system for seven years, and she was a social studies teacher at St. Bernard Middle School, and she currently serves as the instructional coach at St. Bernard Middle School. And she's a state certified mentor. She has provided much of the professional development for our middle school English and Social Studies teachers and has done a great deal of curriculum writing in Social Studies for our middle school. So we feel she's going to do an excellent job in that position district-wide for our middle school curriculum.
Oh, great. Congratulations.
So I want to congratulate her.
Great. Fantastic. How are we doing with the staff and Ms. Richard as far as that goes? We need some more teachers.
Yes, we do need some more teachers.
Best nationwide.
Yeah, district-wide, we have about 11. Hopefully by tomorrow morning, it'll be 10. We have one classroom I need to fill at Smith, one at each of the three middle schools. And right now, tonight, seven at Chalmette Elementary, who of course is our largest school. Chalmette High, yes, I'm sorry. Our largest school. And hopefully tomorrow, that'll be six. And yesterday, we opened our new teacher orientation week. We have a whole week of orientation. It was really exciting to see so many excited, eager teachers, but we're working hard to fill those positions.
Well, that sounds fantastic because it's like a horror story out there in other parishes right now.
It is, but people want to teach in St. Bernard Parish.
Right, that's right.
They do.
Because we've got a good system here.
We do, we do. All righty.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Any questions for Ms. Richard before? Thank you, Ms. Richard. Anything? Okay. All right. Approval of long-range statistic plan for action plan. This was a recommendation by the committee. Motion by Ms. Lemoyne, by Ms. Lee Bowman. This was a recommendation by the committee. Any questions? Please cast your vote.
Motion passes eight zero.
Okay. Approval of 2022, 2023 transportation route. This was a recommendation by the committee. Have a motion by Mr. Long, second by Ms. White. If you've got any questions, we've got Ms. Bernard here. And she won't be here too much longer. We're going to miss you, girl. Any questions? Please cast your vote.
Motion passes eight zero.
Approval of permission to request proposal building management system upgrade. This was a recommendation by the committee. Mr. Jason Russ with us tonight, if you've got any questions. Do we have a motion? Ms. White? Okay. Second. Second by Ms. Lemoyne. This was a recommendation. Please cast your vote.
Motion passes eight zero.
Okay. 5.4, approval amendment to the resolution to employ Hammond, Sills, Atkins, Geis, Noah, and Perkins LLP as special counsel. This was a recommendation by the committee. Mr. Egan? Motion by Mr. Egan. Second. Ms. White? Okay, before we pass the thing, can you read the, into the resolution, Ms. Vochet?
Whereas Louisiana statute 42263 authorizes the retention of special counsel by any school board upon a statement of reasons why such counsel is necessary and upon the approval by the attorney general. And whereas the St. Bernard Parish School Board has employed the law firm Hammond, Sills, Atkins, Geis, Noah, and Perkins, formerly Hammond and Sills, since 2012 as its special counsel with experience, training, and expertise in school law issues, including but not limited to special education, school personnel matters, public bid law, and general school board policy matters involving compliance with the state and federal laws and regulations, including due process hearings, tenure hearings, misconduct investigations, and the handling of administrative hearings and litigation in state and federal courts. And whereas through its representation of the St. Bernard Parish School Board and various school boards throughout the state of Louisiana, the law firm of Hammond, Sills, Atkins, Geis, Noah, and Perkins has special experience, training, and expertise in those matters of school law. Now therefore be duly resolved by the St. Bernard Parish School Board in regular session duly convened. Section one, the school board does hereby renew its employment of the law firm of Hammond, Sills, Atkins, Geis, Noah, and Perkins as special counsel with training, experience, and expertise in school law, including, in school law issues, including but not limited to special education, school personnel matters, public bid law, and general policy matters to include administrative hearings and litigation with respect there to, for the purpose of advising, consulting with, and representing the school board in connection with such legal matters involving the school system. Section two, said law firm shall be paid for their services at hourly rates equal to the maximum hourly fee schedule for special counsel published by the attorney general of the state of Louisiana and effective at the time of the services, except that the paralegal rate shall be $75 per hour and to be reimbursed for out-of-pocket expenses from long-distance telephone calls, document duplication, expert witness fees, court reporter fees, printing costs, travel expenses, and other expenses as a result of the legal services to and for the school board. Section three, said law firm shall keep itemized time records for presentation to the superintendent with respect to services rendered at said hourly rates and the expenses incurred, and the superintendent is hereby authorized and directed to pay same upon submission and receipt thereof. Section four, the employment shall continue and is effective immediately upon adoption of this resolution. Section five, the school board recognizes that claims brought in federal court seeking equitable relief against school boards implicate the interests of the state of Louisiana. And so the school board agrees to provide advance written notice to Louisiana Attorney General 10 business days before the school board's next meeting and an opportunity for the attorney general to express concerns directly to the board in writing or in executive session before the school board. One, proposes a settlement, accepts a proposed settlement, agrees to a consent decree, or enters any other agreement with any party in any federal action for declaratory or injunctive relief that is going to be or has been filed. Or two, files any document in any federal case in which A, declaratory or injunctive relief has been granted against the school board; B, final judgment dismissing the case has not been entered; and C, at least three years have passed since any party seeking relief, including the US DOJ, in an amicus capacity filed any document in the case. Accordingly, the school board authorizes and directs the law firm to provide the required notice to the attorney general, release such information and documentation as the attorney general may request in response to the notice, and generally cooperate with the attorney general in regard to the notice.
Thank you, Ms. Vochet. Any questions about the resolution or the wording of the resolution? If not, please cast your vote.
Motion passes eight zero.
Approval of results of bid tabulation for 2022 to 2023 student athletic insurance. This was a recommendation by the committee. Have a motion by Mr. Wong, second by Ms. Lee Bowman. Any questions or comments? Please cast your vote.
Motion passes eight zero.
Items to be placed on the next committee meeting agenda. This is items to be placed on the next committee meeting agenda. You have five days before the meeting. Get in contact with myself, Ms. Vochet, or Angie, and we'll be glad to address that Superintendent's notes, Ms. Vochet.
Yes, it's, we've had a very, very busy summer last week. All of our administrators were in a week-long workshop getting ready for the opening of school and refining our school improvement plans. Yesterday, our teachers, brand new to the parish, reported for a week of new teacher training. So they're currently at our training center at Chalmette Elementary and going through five days with us in preparation before all of our teachers arrive. All of our teachers will report Monday, August 1st, believe it or not, that's next week, Monday, August 1st, for four days of in-service before our students report for the first day on Friday, August the 5th. The morning of August the 4th, we will have our opening ceremony at the civic center for all of our employees. Our kickoff, where we all get together and talk about our common mission for the year before we greet our students the next morning on August 5th. So we've got a very, very jam-packed two weeks now, less than two weeks before our students return.
I'll tell you what, today, I had my great-granddaughter come over to my house to pick up our school supplies, and I looked at it and said, next week? And she said, what? So you know it's coming quick. So any questions for Ms. Vochet? All right. Jarman? Mr. Campbell? Second by Mr. Egan? All in favor?
You want to take it back?
Yeah, right. Hands are joined. Just give this information back.